Twenty twenty-two at seven O P A, seven P M. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valades?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Abara?
Here.
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. For record and show, we have a quorum present. So we stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first up tonight, approval of our agenda. Everyone taking a look, do we have any changes? Hearing no changes, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion will carry. Approval of the special council meeting minutes from August twenty-second of twenty twenty-two as presented. If no one has any questions or comments on it, didn't see anything wrong. Can I have a motion and a second on those minutes? So moved by trustee Davis, second by trustee Abara. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Approval of the expenditures, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Susan? Pretty unique.
Thank you. There's nothing unique in this warrant listing or accounts payable checklist thing. So if you have any questions, just let me know, they're pretty much the typical monthly expenses.
Yep, the main one being our blue cross, blue shield as well, it looks like.
Correct.
So I know we did go over this committee of the whole, does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, can I get a motion and a second for the approval of the expenditures of six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents? So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Stout. And can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Valades?
That's you. It's just, yeah.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well, that will pass. We have no ratifications tonight. Any committee of the whole reports, any trustees have anything for tonight?
I have one question about the signage at two East Rollins Road. When I'm reading.
We're coming up tonight on that, so let's hold that for the, the actual thing.
Have some questions about it.
Yeah, so nothing from the committee of the whole? All right, moving on to the mayor's report then. First, first up tonight is our recognition of our Lotte Queens. And we thank you all for showing up tonight, if you want to come on up. First, first off, I want to say thank you for coming tonight. We'll let you both talk, all speak, but let's hand these off to you. For our Miss Lotte Queen. Carolina, right? And Lily Bell for Little Miss. If you want to come on up?
You can come up and take a picture if you want.
Yeah. Here you go.
If you want to come back here too, you can come back here.
And we want to thank you guys very much, we loved having us for our first year. And we'll hope to have you back next year to do the transfer of the grounds as well, okay? Yeah. I'll come out. You want to do it this way and then you can come out here too? You know what, why don't you come on around and we'll take pictures like this way, how's that? They probably, yeah. Thank you very much ladies.
Hi, everyone, my name is Carolina Vilches. I go to Round Lake High School, I'm a senior there. Something that I'm going to use the scholarship money for is my AP classes that I'm planning on taking for the rest of the year. So honestly, thank you all for making this scholarship and giving us this opportunity. It's going to go a long way, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Did you enjoy the festival? Oh, very nice.
Very nice.
Are you participating this year? Awesome.
Just kind of practice, right?
Very nice. Well, thank you again for both of you. And we hope to see you next year so we can continue this tradition and pass them off, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Aye, thank you.
All right, finishing with the Lotte Queens, let's move on to the clerk's report. Clerk, do we have a report tonight?
No, we don't.
All right, hearing no report, we'll move on to our first item of business. Item A, an ordinance approving a special use permit for shopping center monument sign for the property at two east Rollins Road. Gil, if you want to start and then we'll let you have a question there Chuck.
Yes, this is, as we spoke at the committee of the whole, this is something that had been in the works for several months. They are putting up a new sign, something that will be more in line with the way the building is used right now. It is another monument sign, there is one there now, they're putting this one in a slightly different location. But the purpose of the sign is to now to allow individual tenants to be seen on the signs, it's the purpose or the, the tenants in the buildings has changed over the years. So that is what we bring before you today and the recommendation was by the Planning and Zoning Commission was for approval.
All right, so I know we do have a question, any, Chuck?
Yes, it's, it's showing up as a shopping center sign and that was all office buildings before, is there a different designation for that area?
No, it, 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 we're calling it a shopper, shopping center sign quote unquote. But no, it is still, it is still an office building.
Okay.
That is not a shopping center.
Thank you.
All right, then having answered that, anyone else have a questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion and a second to go along with Planning and Zoning's suggestion? So moved, and that was trustee Abara.
Second.
Second, please?
Second.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. And a, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
All right, these all will be roll call votes for the rest of these, it looks like. Item B, an ordinance amending the special use permit for the dispensary at ninety-nine-three east Rollins Road relative to the exterior elevation. Again, Director Rivera.
Well, this, thank you mayor and board, this is specific to just the outside elevation, the use has already been something that's been approved by the board. This is something that they ran into as they were completing their building or gaining their permits. They realized that what they thought they were quoted initially for the exterior elevation had increased in, in cost dramatically. So between the increasing costs and their security expert advising them, there were line of sight issues with the, the way the elevation was as far as security cameras seeing the front door with awnings. They requested relief and resubmitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission just for the exterior elevation. Once showing it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended that it be approved, the exterior elevation. And one of their statements said was that they actually liked the new version better than the old version. So we request the recommendation or the board, or I'm sorry, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that it be approved. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. So going along with the special use amendment suggestion from Planning and Zoning. Any questions or concerns on this nine-nine-three east Rollins? Hearing none, can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Stout.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item C, an ordinance approving a plat of consolidation relative to nine-oh-four, nine-oh-six North Cedar Lake Road. Director Rivera.
This was a, a property, excuse me, that the business owners purchased at one point from the village. And when they purchased this property to coincide with their existing business, it was under the request that they would eventually consolidate the two parcels. And they are doing that right now, they are at a point where they'd like to do that, so that's what we are doing today. Requesting that an ordinance be passed so they can consolidate these properties.
All right, considering this is something that we had requested. And the Planning and Zoning Board has approved, can I have a motion and a second to carry this through? So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote?
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item D, an ordinance of the village around Lake Beach authorizing acquisition of certain real property, Scott Puma, village attorney?
Yep, thank you, mayor. This relates to the former Kmart site, we have to add some blighting standards to the acquisition ordinance as additional reasons to acquire the property. So I'm recommending that the board approve this ordinance as to the acquisition so that it can, it assists us in going forward with the, the acquisition. The, the condition hasn't changed, the, I know there's been some graffiti on the building, so we've added that as, as one of the blighting standards.
All right. This is a property that's been a blight on the village for over ten years, so we're wanting to move forward with this if we could. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
All moved.
Second.
So moved by trustee Husk, second by trustee Cleveland. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion will carry. Item E, business ordinance amending title, chapter, title one, chapter nineteen of the village code regarding the administrative procedures to determine eligibility for benefits under the Illinois Public Safety Benefits Act. I know we discussed this committee whole. Scott, do you want to briefly?
Sure, so this matter comes from, as, from your labor council, Jill Leica and Jill and I have coordinated with Rich Hill on this. And we're in agreement that to make, recommend these changes to the board relative to the application process if police officers are injured in the line of duty. This will streamline the process, make it clear as to what a police officer needs to do. And it also will avoid some additional expenses in the event the police pension board has awarded a line of duty disability. So if anybody has any questions, the ordinance, there were a few tweaks to it that were made in between the committee of the whole meeting and what's in your packet. But those are shown in the red line that, that was included, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions at all, folks? Hearing none, can I have a motion and a second, move this forward? So moved by trustee Abara. Second by trustee Stout. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item F, resolution approving Lomelli Enterprises as a preferred caterer for the Round Lake Beach Cultural and Civic Center. This was village administrator Mark Rooney's area, but more or less this is, Lomellis is asked to be a preferred caterer along with some of the other caterers that we do have that are already approved. They have applied and we just need to approve this with the board's blessed blessing. Can I have a motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Ayes have it, we have one more choice for service at the civic center now. Item G, a resolution approving, I'm in random, of understanding regarding the A Way Out program. Chief Wiley.
Thank you, mayor and board, we discussed this at the committee of the whole. We've participated, matter of fact, we were one of the original agencies back in twenty sixteen to participate with the Lake County Health Department in the Way Out program. It has expanded, pretty much tripling its participation throughout the county and other law enforcement agencies. And with that, they are just updating their memorandum of understanding with the participating agencies. So we're just requesting that authorization to still participate and sign the agreement with the Way Out program.
More or less this is paperwork, just to finish up and re, re-up. So if we could then, a motion, a second.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well, so the motion will carry. Item H, a resolution authorizing and proving award of contractors Chicagoland Paving Contractors Incorporated in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars plus a ten percent contingency fee for any unforeseen conditions. Director Hiltz, I'll let you talk, but this is mainly excess funds that we had from our original road program for the year?
So yes, we, we budgeted an amount for the rebuild Illinois capital improvement. The original called Road Program One came in under budget and we were able to use the remainder budget for a second road program. These streets were identified as part of our capital plan and they also fit into doing a fall program where there'll be minimal residential impact to, you know, schools, so it's more of our commercial or industrial area.
Always nice when we can get down a, more work than we had planned and more work than we had, that we already had paid money set aside for.
That is correct.
If I can, a motion and a second for the approval to Chicagoland Paving Contractors not to exceed three-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars plus the ten percent contingency fee for any unforeseen conditions in the roadways.
All moved.
So, all right, we have trustee Da, I'm sorry. Trustee Valades for the motion, trustee Stout for a second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion will carry. Business item I, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Ozlot grant for the Lakefront Park project. Director Hiltz?
Thank you again, this project was discussed at the committee of the whole, but also has been part of the comprehensive plan for many years. We acquired two, no, three properties to the north of the lakefront. And this is sort of the final phase to the lakefront comprehensive plan. This year, the Ozak grant has increased their funding limits, so it is a good opportunity for the village to take advantage. Again, they'll pay up to fifty percent, so this project was just over a million, which they'll fund, you know, five-hundred-thousand dollars for this project. We did have a public input meeting and, and did get favorable comments. So this is just authorizing the village to commit to this project as part of the application.
Thank you very much, again, this is up for an Ozlot grant, so we're, we're hoping that this funding does come through, not necessarily that it will. But we definitely feel that the, the time we've spent on this in gathering that property, this is a well-spent, well-spent money. So if we could, a motion and a second for the resolution authorizing the submission of the Ozlot grant for the Lakefront Park. We have a motion by trustee Valades.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
The ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item J is a resolution authorizing improvement, approving a letter of agreement for custom work and a custom work agreement with AT&amp;T in the amount not to exceed thirty-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Director Hiltz?
Yeah, so this was discussed at the committee of the whole, I unfortunately was not able to attend, but as the, the memo stated and was discussed that some of the scope wasn't clear as part of the plans. Also, based on municipal way, is typically, is, is a easement and not a right of way. So didn't fall under our franchise agreement, so we, the owners of that property are sort of obligated to make, move any utilities in the way, if it was a right of way, utility company would, would be able, would have to move it. So that's, that was part of the unforeseen scope change. But however, the contractor is going to credit the, overall contractor, contract amount ten thousand, there'll be some other cost savings. From what I've heard from the engineers, we will be under the ten percent contingency for this project.
Perfect.
Overall.
Very nice to know that we're coming in under budget or on budget.
Within the budget.
At all times, that's, that's great. So if we could, a resolution authorizing the approving the agreement for custom work with AT&amp;T in a not to exceed amount of thirty-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-six dollars and eighty-three cents. So moved by trustee Abara. Second by trustee Davis, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item K, a resolution approving a construction administration, the construction administration agreement with? M C?
It's really with Verizon.
Okay, I see, M C I Metro, I'm sorry, that was, no abbreviation, I was trying to figure out how to say that all in one word. So M C I Metro Access Transmission Services doing business as Verizon. Scott?
So this is, this was drafted by the village attorney's firm. They, M C I, originally M C I was bought out by Verizon, they, they are under the franchise agreement, what we talked about within the state of Illinois, so they have the right to be within the right of way. However, being a home rule community, we were, we able to dictate some of the construction means and methods as far as permitting, just, we, we have to allow them in our right of way. But this agreement helps control any projects for permitting restoration. It's a standard agreement that we've, most municipalities add to new utilities entering our right of way, does that sound correct, Scott?
It is, an excellent summary, this is something that, that will give the village some extra protections in the event of, of issues. And it also gives you a kind of a seat at the table instead of just having the state statute govern.
All right. Then if I could, a resolution approving the construction administration agreement for Verizon more or less, M C I Metro. Can I have a motion and a second? So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Business item L, a resolution approving proposal for landscape services from Yellowstone Landscaping for certain village entry signs and the Oak Tree Trail Lift Station in the amount not to exceed sixteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Director Hiltz?
So this item is just to, to complete both projects that were completed over the summer. We, we did have new entry signs throughout the village, some of our main locations, we were going to add some landscaping to protect the signs and, and give it more of a architectural pleasing look. Also, Oak Tree Lift Station was completely rebuilt, so we do need to add some screening for sound and visual for the, for the residents in the park and the area.
All right, not that these two items were together, but because of the fact that?
It's the same contractor and they maintain both, both sites.
Yep. So if we could then, a resolution approving the proposal for the landscape services to Yellowstone Landscaping for the village entry signs, some of them, and the Oak Tree Trail Lift Station in the amount not to exceed the sixteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Can I have a motion and a second, please? All right, so moved by trustee Davis, second by trustee Valades, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item M, a resolution approving an agreement with Three D Design Studio for the landscape architectural services and approving expenditures for landscape, landscaping for the twenty-twenty-two municipal campus improvement program in amount not to exceed of seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the plans more or less and thirty-five-thousand dollars for the actual landscaping services and the restoration. I know we did discuss this at committee of the whole, but Director Hiltz?
So yeah, this, I, I believe this ordinance was crafted to do both, is that correct, Scott?
Yes, thank you.
So the landscape architectural drawings for Three D Design, like the mayor stated, are just over seven thousand. Thirty-five thousand is our budgeted amount for the scope of work. So Dan from Three D Design is revising the plans to make sure we fall within the approved budget amount today. And then we'll be able to get three quotes and approve the contract based on this resolution without going back to the board.
All right, if we can then, a resolution approving the agreement with Three D Design and architectural service. And then also for the landscape service and restoration. What is that, thirty, forty? Forty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars in total? All right, and I have a motion and a second, please.
Moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
All right, a resolution approving for business item N, proposal for McNeely Services Incorporated for the LED banquet hall lighting project at the Round Lake Beach Cultural and Civic Center relative to the village asset replacement program in the amount not to exceed of sixty-eight relative to the village asset replacement program in the amount not to exceed of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety cents. This is, um, asset replacement, which is the lighting and the building that we are, we are having trouble with as is, and also the, uh, control centers, right?
Yes, so, uh, the old system was, um, an outdated, well, it was the original control, lighting control system that controls dimming and also able to control, um, they're controlled with soundboards for concerts. So, um, again, that technology is fifteen years old and a few of the components did fail. So right now we are sort of, um, on life support, we s- replace the lights, have to rebuild each individual light until the new system comes in. We couldn't convert it to LED, um, because, um, that panel does, you can't switch the components, plus some of the other components in that panel have failed. So we do have to com- um, complete the whole project as one.
All right, um, so then if we could, a resolution and I do know there was a question, did we answer?
There wasn't.
There was a warranty question, uh, at the Committee of the Whole, um, Scott, and we were discussing it.
Yeah, this estimate, or the proposal they gave us was for one-year material and labor, um, like most commercial projects that we have. I can, uh, reach out to them and what we've done in the past for certain items. I put them on a maintenance program. They will, um, typically have a, um, extended warranty slash maintenance program that we can add, but that would be something that we can hand, handle internally.
Okay. All right, so it is more or less a one-year because it's commercial and I did find this out too after the fact that a lot of, uh, your things that it might residentially have a two-year, three-year, four-years warranty, five-year warranty on it. When you buy commercially, it will only be a one-year. Although, as we've witnessed with the last, the last one that is fifteen years old, um, it's done us and served us fairly well because we, we usually have a ten-year shelf life on, on items, five and ten-year shelf life.
We would program a, a depreciation of ten years.
Yeah. So that way we know that we plan for a replacement after a ten-year window anyway. So, and approving, uh, business item N, the resolution approving the proposal for McNeely, for the Civic Center relative to the asset replacement program in the amount of not to exceed sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety cents.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the longevity and from the date of purchase to, since it's only a one-year warranty, right, because it's commercial, you stated. So anytime after the warranty, let's just say it expires thirteen months and we have major issues, the replacement for that would be what?
Well, it would depend on what, what failed, but we, we typically on these items will get a maintenance program so we can at least get, um, whatever they offer, like three to five years. Then anything else would just be based on a time of material or, or, you know, repair cost.
The likelihood of something failing completely
Yes.
would be me- the, the likelihood of something failing completely would be minimal, but if something failed, you would, yeah, it'd be just like your car, you'd have to pay for the part and the labor to do it. But your, the likelihood of have to replace your whole car because of an issue is very slim. It would be the same in this situation.
Yeah, I assume it was a lot in, lot in that item regarding like replacement, um, and how much the cost would be or if it's no, the minimum cost would be.
For item I, I, I couldn't tell you. It depends on what would fail.
Yeah.
You know, um, an LED light when, you know, would, would have to be replaced even though their life is
The life expectancy of
Supposed to be longer, but that's not always the case.
Life expectancy of a, a LED bulb here could be seven years, but
Fail after a year.
If, if failed after a year, you'd be replacing that one bulb. So the same goes here. If, if something were to happen, they would just have to replace the item that wasn't working. So it wouldn't be the whole sixty-nine thousand dollars again. It would be, uh, a portion thereof and you couldn't guess.
There'd be a time of material cost.
Yeah.
That would come under like an extended warranty type situation, wouldn't it?
That's what we're going to look into.
Yeah, we could ask about that if, if that's, yeah.
This is quite a, this is a, this is a big expenditure and if commercial only applies to one-year warranty and s- some greater issue would happen, say rain, like, cause we had that before where rain and somebody, um, wiring.
Well, I mean, if, if there is, if there is an incident like that, our insurance may be able to
Cover it.
Cover some.
Prices go up as we know and if we're going to invest in that type of dollar amount, we want to get a, get a good lock-in for a good product and for a good service, so it doesn't increase highly.
So this, I kind of equate it with something, our computers have a shelf life of, what are we, what do we say, five years is what we, at max?
Yeah, three to five years.
Three to five years, we have, we have it set up, what's the word for it again?
Replacement program.
Replacement program that in three to five years, we're gonna, we're gonna replace it. Well, after one year, that warranty pretty much is not going to be any good. So if something happens to it, we're going to have to replace it or repair it at a cost. So this is the same type of thing and, and actually if you compare it to computers, this is a pretty low, low-cost item, um, overall is with the village, but it's a large cost. But if, we really have to, we have to do the work. Overall, the lighting that's there is failed. We can't rent the facility out.
Comparing lighting to computers is apples to oranges.
It's, it's similar to our HVA system.
As you know, anything could happen at any given time. Um, and I just want to make sure that the village, this expenditure, what we're going to, uh, pay for it is a comfortable cost because I didn't see any other, um, and I could have missed it when I read my packet or when it was discussed. I didn't see any other amounts that were reviewed or, um, that could have been lower or anyone else that you could have looked into, only this.
It is a, it's sort of a, a custom system that they, they brought in multiple vendors for, to see which one would be even compatible for us, for our existing infrastructure.
Yeah. I don't know how, how else to explain it. It's a, it's an expenditure that we'll ha- that we have, um, in, in reality for
I understand it's, it's expenditure, but what I'm saying is it's a high dollar amount. The warranty, well, unfortunately the warranty is only a year because it's, it's commercial. So there's nothing that we can bypass or try to get a better dollar amount.
Except for he is going to look into, as, as we do with the computers, extended warranties.
He's going to be looking into an extended warranty.
We should be able to apply to get one.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not comfortable with, with that dollar amount and, uh, only a year and something were to go wrong like last time a few years ago, as you know, what happened there. So the money that was spent there
I guess I don't know.
When there was rain in the, or, in the Civic Center, they had to repair a lot of electric, all the wiring and stuff.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that
That's not a, something that would be covered under warranty?
Right.
That's something that's covered under insurance.
I want to make sure if something were to happen, that we could be covered or get the extended warranty
Yeah.
um, because of the dollar amount. And I know we do need it. That's not even a question, you know, we do need that, so.
All right.
Those are my questions.
Scott, we will look into the extended portion of the warranty on the
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to McNelly as our general to see, um, what the vendor that's supplying the equipment
Yeah.
what sort of warranty they'll give us.
Okay.
Or at least extended warranty.
All right, for the resolution approving the proposal for McNeely Services then, for the banquet hall lighting project at the Round Lake Beach Cultural Civic Center, um, the village asset replacement program in the amount of not to exceed sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety cents. So to explain that just one more time in, in relative, this lighting system that's there now is fifteen years old. So we already have this money budgeted into the system for replacement costs. So although it, it seems like a lot of money for, for lighting, it is something that we were expecting to have to do. The only thing we were expected not to have to do is to continue using the, um, controls, but the controls are out after fifteen years as well and they wouldn't work effectively with the LEDs that we're going to use that are going to save us money in the long run. If that helps a little.
Well, as you said
I don't think she's worried about a bulb going out. I think it's more the control panel.
Yeah.
Like if the control panel failed, you know, thirteen months later.
Sure.
Well, with current system, the control panel is incapable in, uh,
Incapable.
Yeah. Capable of taking care of the LED stuff.
So we will definitely get, get them to look into that, um, as well. Correct, it could, I mean, worst-case scenarios, it always could, could, could have come with extra costs, I agree. So I, can I get a motion and a second, uh, on the village asset reprogram, replacement program in the amount not to exceed a sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety cents for the lighting in the LED banquet hall? So moved by trustee Abara.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. Uh, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
All right, eyes have that, motion will carry. Scott will come back at some point or another here, um, with an answer from them, just so we have an idea too.
I can just, I can add it to my next report.
Okay.
That, once we have that information.
Thank you. Item O, the resolution approving an agreement with Wilcom Business Technology Solutions for security cameras in amount not to exceed fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Chief Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Uh, we did discuss this at the Committee of the Whole. Obviously with the expansion of our parking lots from our campus improvement plan, we discovered that we have several blind spots that the entire campus isn't covered anymore. We brought in Wilcom, uh, will be not completely replacing the system. We need to update the NVR system to have the additional ports for the additional cameras that we have and then we'll also be actually updating the system used in the interior of the police department for the interview rooms. They are on a completely separate system than the rest of the village. So, uh, we had talked to them about upgrading that, so every video camera in the village will be on the exact same system as well, so, um, while we're not doing a complete replacement for the police department in Village Hall, it's more of a, um, upgr- updating and up, uh, adding additional cameras to cover those blind spots while adding a new NVR, uh, to support those additional cameras since we only have a few ports, open ports left.
And just, uh, and the NVR is just an, um,
Network.
Different style of a
Network video recorder.
It's another style of a video recorder. So, uh, cause I knew we'd have to have another one of those because of the fact that it only holds so many cameras, correct?
Yeah, currently, right now, we only, we only hold, uh, uh, that NVR only has twelve open ports. We only have three open, uh, that are available and we need to put five additional cameras up to get the rest of the coverage. So what, uh, what we're proposing right now is to keep the current NVR that will just house the Village Hall side. We'll up, we'll get a different NVR for the police department side, so then we'll be on the exact same system. It's just two different NVRs, but we will still have three-hundred-and-sixty-degree coverage of the exterior of the building.
All right, so business item O, uh, resolution approving the agreement with Wilcom Business Technology Solutions for security cameras in amount not to exceed the fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Any questions or comments on the, um, technology solutions? All right, hearing none. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Husk, second by trustee Valades. Uh, roll call vote.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades. Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara.
Aye.
All right, the eyes will have that too. Right now, we are, uh, the point of our meeting for open for public participation. Does anyone in the public have any questions or comments for the board? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name, uh, and followed by a question or comments. Hearing none. Uh, we have no executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, executive session minutes, personnel or collective bargaining. So at this point, we are, uh, asking for an adjournment, a motion and a second. So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Abara. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, adjournment time. Seven forty-six.